We now call this meeting to order. If you could please rise if you are able and pay attention to Councilmember Mays for the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Jacob Martin to the microphone. Jacob is a new Topeka resident. He moved here about three months ago. He's the youth director at Topeka First United Methodist and also the director of the Washburn Student Campus Ministry. So I'll turn it over to Jacob.
Thank you so much, Aaron. I'm excited to be a new Topekan. It's a great season of life to be coming into Topeka. I'm eager to see all that is happening, just in the growth that I've seen in the last five years with my family living here. So blessed to have this opportunity to join you this evening. But if you'll bow your heads, I'll pray. Dear God, Heavenly Father, we just come to you grateful and thankful for this opportunity to come together in community and understanding that there is so much more that we can do. May you continue to fill our hearts with care and concern for our fellow community members. May you guide us and lead us in the intentions and your ways that you will for this place, God. I ask that you fill our hearts and our minds and give us guidance and clarity on the tough decisions, the things that don't come easy, and also, God, on the things that may seem slow and enduring, but God comes to your purpose. We just ask all this in your Son's name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So have you all noticed, this is a party crew that travels. They're groupies of the city council.
They're traffic data drivers.
For when we get too drunk with policy.
That's right.
There you go. So this month, we are celebrating, not celebrating, but commemorating the mental health and substance abuse recovery. As we all know, in our community, and not only in our community, but throughout the nation, there are several individuals that are struggling with mental health issues that, rather than seeking help, sometimes medicate themselves with substances, whether that be drugs or whether that be alcohol. And to all of you, we want to say there's hope. You don't need to continue in this pattern of behavior. There's plenty of support for you in this community. And make sure that if you do have a need that you're struggling with, know that there's people here in this community that are here to wrap their arms around you. So the proclamation says, "Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and prevention of mental health and substance use or disorder, works treatment is effective for people to recover in Topeka, Kansas, and around Shawnee County; and whereas people in recovery achieve healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally and contribute in positive ways to their communities; and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental health and substance abuse disorders to implement preventive measures, recognizing the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment, recovery, and services." Therefore, I, Michelle De La Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, proclaim the month of September 2019 as Mental and Substance Use Recovery Month.
Could I introduce some groups?
Absolutely.
Amanda Sister Wilson, the Director of Drug Court, Shawnee, the Third Judicial District Drug Court. Rick Anson from New Dawn Wellness and Recovery. Bill Persinger, the CEO of Behavioral, Valeo Behavioral Health Care. Kathy with a C, Walker, the Director of Valeo Recovery Center. Michelle Vos, Hughes Vos, Michelle H. Vos, the Executive Director of Prevention and Recovery Services. And I'm Max Wilson, a lowly drug, a lowly, I almost said it, a lowly alcohol and drug abuse advisory council member.
Well, you're not lowly. You have been in our community doing amazing work for many, many years, and we thank you for that service and for continuing even after your retirement. Remember those names. Make sure that you just rewind the tape or hit back to the little button when you're looking at us on Facebook Live. These are your resources, and you have a whole community here to support you. There is no need to stay in pain.
One more introduction. Nancy Lowman, the Director of New Dawn Wellness and Recovery. Stand up, Nancy, so people can see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm very excited to have the TPD come forward with Mr. Alejandro, who is one of the explorers. And he is going to share a little bit about the Explorers Program from the Topeka Police Department, so that you guys all know not only what our police department is doing, which is wonderful, but also what great things our youth is doing in our community.
Do I speak?
Yes.
Yep.
Right there. And put him to the microphone.
Well, I would like to thank you for having me here, and I'd also like to thank my two advisors for being here, Brandon Gogan and Alexander Wall. They're two of my very best role models I've seen in a while. The Explorer Post. I joined when I was 15, sophomore, or yes, freshman, second semester freshman year. And I didn't really know what I was going to do with my life when I was younger. I really thought I wanted to be a cook, still like to cook. But this is a very, it's more rooted in earth, kind of reality. The program is from 14 years of age to 21, so when you can be hired as a officer, is for anyone that is interested in law enforcement or anything, I guess, involving rules and regulations of what you want to learn in this city. It's a very great program. We have a very diverse community in there, and we also go out and seek out others that we need help, such as other volunteering opportunities that we do throughout the year. I've been in this Explorer Program for about four years now. The stars probably on this side represent that. This is about three years, and a few months I'll be at four. As a younger child, I was adopted when I was two years old, so I've never really had a great sense of family. But when I joined this, it was like a new family to me. It felt like something I needed, and it gave me a good sense of role models and what I should become when I become older. When I first started, I took three months off for football. Was more ingrained in school and football at the time. But once I got into it and learned more about the law and more about Constitution and more about what the police officers actually do here, I really fell in love with what to do and with being in contact with the community and just kind of helping out with what I can and where I can. That is how I met the great mayor, of course. We ate at Taco Mexicano, and she spilled cheese upon her shirt. It was great. Throughout the four years I've been with the Explorer Post, I've been to six competitions, two in Gatlinburg, two in Texas, one in Vegas, and one in Tulsa. They've all been great. My favorite one was my first one in Gatlinburg, when I really bonded with everyone, bonded with the advisors, bonded with the explorers, and I met some of my best friends within the post. Some of them already became officers, some of are about to, some are being hired right now, and some are on the way, just like me. Throughout the years, I've been able to do a few ride-alongs to actually see what police officers do on the day-to-day. I've done one with Officer Brandon Gogan over here, and he really showed me a lot of, I guess, courage and also how to handle people in actual situations. We do practicals and lectures every Monday night, such as domestic calls, crisis negotiation, bomb threat, anything you can think of that an officer does on the day-to-day, and even more obscure ones like SWAT and crisis negotiation, even car stops, we do. We talk about them, how they're constitutional, why we do what we do, and then we execute them in competition and in scenario-based training at the LEC, at the Law Enforcement Center. To fund our uniforms and our trips, we do volunteering throughout the year. We usually do, we have some set ones that we do every year, like the Fiesta Mexicana. We have, do overnights for that. We also do parades, do security for parades, and also set up staging. We also do other ones like Heartland Park. We do overnight security and also gate security for those events. And then with that, we use the money that we get from volunteering and also from other outside sources that donate to us to go out and help out the community, get more stuff for the explorers, and also help out and get scholarships for some of us. I got a $500 scholarship from my school that I'm going to right now, which is in Baker, Baldwin City, and I'm loving every second of it. I can't wait to come back and be a speaker police officer. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alejandro. We have questions for you.
Of course.
Deputy Mayor.
I don't have a question. I have a, yay, guys, that was uplifting to hear someone of your age. That was just great. You just sound like a perfect candidate, good kiddo.
Thank you.
Great for you.
Alejandro, what would you tell other young individuals that are watching this? You are watching young people, right? That are watching this, or to the parents? How do they get involved in the program?
If you want to get involved, contact someone at your school. Most schools in Topeka have some connection to the TPD Explorer Post. And also, if you don't know what you want to do with your life, or even if you do know, it's a really great experience to get into, to learn about the community, learn what great things there are, and also get ingrained in actually helping out with others and become part of a cause that's bigger than yourself.
Additional questions or comments for Alejandro? Thank you so much. Do you want to come forward?
Absolutely, please. So he does a great job of talking about everyone else, but he doesn't do a real good job of talking about himself, which is a good leadership trait of his. He does a phenomenal job. He plays a vital role in the program, both as one of the senior leaders, but also encouraging and developing leaders to replace him one day when he's gone. He's part of a group that spearheaded 6,200 volunteer hours in our community last year and is already hovering right around 4,000 hours this year with about four months to go. So those national competitions he talked about, he represents our city and the department very well. We traveled to Las Vegas for a national competition this summer, and they placed third against, we're talking about Santa Bernino County, Las Vegas Metro, big West Coast agencies and cities, and he was able to bring home a trophy there. We just came back from Texas for a regional one, and theirs is kind of like a national, everything's bigger in Texas, right? So they've got a very, very large competition. We call it a regional one, but we see more teams there than we do at a national event. And his team brought home two first-place trophies and a third-place trophy. So, and he is an integral part of that. He's leading his team, he's guiding them, he's planning, he's making sure he's putting the time in, on their own time, in the evenings, talking to each other. So while he'd like to talk about everyone else and what they're doing, I want to make sure we discuss a little bit about what an asset Alejandro is to the community.
Thank you so much for your service.
Of course. Thank you.
We now proceed with the rule call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Jensen?
Present.
Mays?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
And Lester?
Here.
We now move on to the consent agenda. If the clerk would read.
A is a resolution approving the issuance by the City of Wichita, Kansas, of its healthcare facilities revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of existing living facilities located in the City of Topeka, Kansas. B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of June 29 through August 2, 2019, and enumerating said expenditures therein. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Jeff Cohen, granting Speck's Bar &amp; Grill an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seek concerning noise prohibitions. D is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller, approving a special event known as the Mission Fest 2019 Kickoff Concert. E is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller, approving a special event known as Mission Fest 2019. F is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller, granting the Celtic Fox an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seek concerning noise prohibitions. G are minutes of the regular meeting of August 20, 2019. There's one cereal beverage license application for Love's Travel Shop located at 1811 Northwest Brickyard Road, and staff is recommending approval.
We have heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilman Jensen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Jensen. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Padilla. Additional comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the action items. Action item A, if the clerk would read.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, adopting the 2019 Standard Traffic Ordinance, STO, and local amendments thereto, amending TMC 1015-010 and TMC 1015-020.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, tonight before you, you have both the STO and UPOC, which is the next item. The approvals of these are to be done on an annual basis, based on the information that's provided by the League of Kansas Municipalities at the end of each legislative session in order to ensure that our ordinances are in line with what has been approved by state law the previous legislative session. So Coran has gone through that and provided you the information in your package, and Coran's here available for answering questions if there are any.
We have heard that. Are there any questions at this point in time? Councilwoman Hiller.
Mayor, I do not have questions now, but I wanted to thank Coran and staff, because I did have some, and they were able to get. I hope that we can always make available to the council and the public the full copy of the new STOs as well as the old ones, so that people who want to look can. But at this point, they're published, and your help was very useful, and I'm good.
Appreciate it. It's not just me, the whole legal department, so thank you.
Yeah.
Additional comments or questions? What is the pleasure of the body?
Move to approve.
Move, move. We have a motion by Councilwoman Hiller. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Mays. Additional comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item B, if the clerk would read.
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, adopting the 2019 Uniform Public Defense Code, UPOC, and local amendments thereto, amending Topeka Municipal Code 905080.
City Manager.
As I mentioned, this is the other component of our approval on an annual basis, and this includes the local amendments are remaining the same as they're currently adopted, which is always important, as we modify where we need to our ordinances. So nothing further.
Comments or questions from the team? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Lesser. We have a second by the deputy mayor. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item C, if the clerk would read.
D is a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, providing notice of a public hearing concerning the establishment of a redevelopment district, TIF, within the City of Topeka, the Dynamic Core Redevelopment District pursuant to KSA 121770 at seek as amended.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Governing body, tonight we take the next step as it relates to the continuation of the Dynamic Core, TIF District, TIF redevelopment district process. Tonight, we ask that you set a hearing date of October 8 to conduct the hearing related to this matter. We, staff and the developer, are here to answer questions if there are any. Otherwise, we would take this step and move a month from now to have consideration of this item.
All right. Comments or questions on this item? Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there going to be a presentation about this or not?
No. There's nothing further than what we already presented.
This is just a date hearing. I just want to, I'm very torn about being at this juncture. I have lived with this for the last, whatever it's been, six months, and it seems that the longer we go, the more issues pop up, and then we resolve that one, and there's another. I think, so my preference when we go for a public hearing is that we have everything all figured out and all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. We are not there yet with this proposal. So my preference is to have all that done so that that intervening 30 days, all of that final information is out. I understand the other point of view, which is just let's get going and let's use the public hearing for that information. But I just want to state that position. I'm absolutely in favor of economic development. I think TIF is a wonderful tool. The proposal that we've had was very unusual. At this point, staff, for instance, just recently, the proposal staff is researching nationally to see if there are models like this one, and if they've been successful or if they failed. And if there aren't any models, why not? So that we can really do that deep dive and be thoughtful about whether moving this forward is a good idea. Along the way of considering this, we learned from the county, county councillor pointed out that the TIF and the NRP are identical, are mutually exclusive programs. Right now, we have 59 NRP deals in that district. Those are, they are different programs. If we pass this district, we will be able to amend NRP projects out, but we will have to do that. Every one of them will have to come to the council as an ordinance and be opted out. So a process that for business, commercial, retail building owners and residents was as simple as going in, filling out the form when you file for your permits, and it's handled administratively, all of a sudden will be something that will have to be in ordinance form and go to the council. Right now, the district has its proposed, actually, the language in this ordinance says it goes to 17th and Topeka. The last version I saw cut out a corner, kind of a round, round B board. But even with that corner out, there are two very recognizable full residential, moderate-income residential districts in this plan. I think we need to think through what we would be saying to prospective developers if we leave those neighborhoods in. Obviously, if we do this hearing, they'll all get a letter. Guess who gets all the phone calls? But I'm concerned about that. They are all eligible for NRP. Most of the NRP uses have been the downtown development buildings. I think we all need to look at some mockups of those projects that have already occurred and just be able to ask the staff and the partnership folks whether TIF would have been a better product or whether the choices that they had were the best and would continue to be the best for those kinds of projects. They are different products. I have asked for a side-by-side so that it would be easy for all of us, as well as for residents, to look at the differences between them, and we don't have that yet. We also, I think we need to, as a body, I mean, I'll ask for it, but as a body, to have an updated list of incentives. Right now, there is not a list. TIF has been an option for downtown all along. There's been some discussion that the reason to go after this is to show that we're developer-friendly. But we don't want us to be reinventing again, you know, trying to create something new when we actually have a really great toolbox, and TIF is one of those tools. All that said, if creating that master district, it's been very complicated. With North Topeka opting out, that district is becoming more homogeneous and more similar to the ones that have been big districts that have been done before. But I just think it needs a lot, a lot more thought. So again, you all will vote the way you want, and I can see it both ways, but I hope that everyone will give consideration and that these documents that I think we and the public need can be created really soon so that they're available, and that's only, the proposed date is four weeks from now, I think, so that there's time to review them so that the public hearing is really complete, that we really do talk through the issues. My understanding is that right now, perhaps because so many of these issues have been up in the air, staff thought, Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, is that there would be a hearing only. Sometimes when we do a hearing, there's an expectation that we would vote immediately at the end of the hearing, and that we don't really have to do that, but it can give us a chance to process on this. This is really, really important, and I think it's wonderful to have innovative and bold ideas. Just want to make sure that it's before we would vote it through. It's what we want, and again, that we set a public hearing date that is timely for having that, whatever information we need available.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to commend Councilwoman Hiller on her concern that we get this right, because I agree with you that we need to get this right. This is a huge part of our economic development in our downtown for the foreseeable future. I like the idea of moving forward with a public hearing for two reasons. One, it sets a deadline. Everybody always works better with deadlines. And two, there are a number of things that we may or may not have thought about that the public probably will. Going to the public hearing is our opportunity to interact with people and get their feedback and their thoughts and ideas, because there are a number of things we may or may not have thought about when it gets there. So I do think that we should move ahead tonight with setting a public hearing, working to get what information we can hammered out and available by then, and then using that public hearing as an opportunity to talk with everybody and get their thoughts and feedback on it, because I'm not sure exactly what all is out there that we're missing. This is a very large, complicated thing that we haven't really done before as a community, at least in this capacity, being proactive. The other part of a TIF district that I haven't heard mentioned tonight is our ability to leverage that to continue working on the infrastructure in downtown. There are numerous sidewalks that need to be redone. This is some of the oldest infrastructure in our city, and this district also gives us the opportunity, if there's no developers right out of the gate, it gives us the opportunity to take the revenue from that district and reinvest it in that district, which I'm particularly excited about, because that will help everything grow, using that district to do the growing. So the two aspects I would ask you to take away, let's move forward to the public hearing. I think that's a great way of getting all the other ideas about this that we're not necessarily sure about, and remember that this is a great way for this district to finance its own infrastructure work when it's applicable. And with that, I will move for approval.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
There's a.
I know. We will go to the speaker immediately after we have a second or not. Okay, so we have a second by the deputy mayor. At this point in time, because it's discussion time, because we have a second, I would like to invite Mr. Will Pope, who's here to speak on this item.
Good evening, council. And this TIF would be bad for Topeka. Councilwoman Hiller, I appreciate your caution. That's well placed. I would encourage you to vote against this tonight, put an end to the plan. And I'd point out that city policy requires that any TIF district pass a but-for test to show that any future development requires the TIF in order for that development to take place. But you can't show that because you have no proposed development on the table yet. So you're violating your own policy by moving forward on a speculative TIF district. This is a bad way to go, and I'd also point out, you've got to show blight, and a lot of this district is not blighted. You know, is your New Cyrus Hotel blighted? I don't think so. Is the West Star Building blighted? No. Why are these buildings in the proposed TIF district? They should be taken out. You know, a lot of academic research has been done on TIF districts, and what it shows, it shows that TIF districts don't create economic growth in a city. What it does is it moves economic activity from one part of a city to another part of a city. St. Louis, over a 20-year period, they put $1.3 billion into TIF projects, and what they found was it had no effect on their economic activity, little or no effect. And what it did, though, is it moved from one part of the city to another. So what you could be doing, if you create a downtown TIF, is you're going to be creating blight, maybe on the south side, maybe on the west side, maybe on the north side, maybe in Oakland. And that would be a bad move for Topeka, because we don't need blight in those areas. We need fair economic conditions. You know, Kansas City, they've done a lot of TIF work, too. They're still trying to pay off their TIF because it failed to meet projections. Their TIF has brought in about 23% of what they projected it would, and because of that, they're taking a hit on their general fund. And right now, we can't take a hit on the general fund, can we? We need to be smarter about it. You know, this TIF would also be bad for Topeka in many other ways, because if you create a TIF district and these a TIF district and these downtown properties are no longer feeding into city operational cost, well, that's got to come from somewhere, because the city budget, I imagine, would continue to grow. So everybody outside of the TIF district, they're going to be paying a larger percentage of operational cost in the future, which is not good for those people. If you have to raise the mill levy on them because you've created a TIF downtown, you're not helping them. You're not making it easier to attract businesses to those areas, and you're certainly not helping homeowners. It's also hurting other taxing entities within the area. You're going to be taking away tax revenue from the county, from the library, from the school district, from the metro. And this is not just a small TIF district, like some of the ones that you've done before. This is a very large area with very valuable property. So this would be an irresponsible move. You know, I would encourage you to table this. I know there's been a lot of push for it, but people are not happy with it, because it's going to hurt them in the future, and I don't think it's going to help our city. So please be very thoughtful about it, and I would encourage you to vote against it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could follow up with just a couple of comments. Well, I appreciate your comments, however, we're not advocating to borrow money for this TIF district at all. It's absolutely a reimbursement district. So the idea that we would borrow money and the district would not be able to cover those costs, that doesn't necessarily apply to how it would work, because we're using reimbursement costs. Also, there's a lot of infrastructure, city-owned infrastructure in downtown that is in dire need of repair, and a lot of that is going to require city funds to do. So the idea of using money from the district to go back into the district is part of what we're proposing here, and we would basically use money, the tax revenue that this district creates, to fix the infrastructure cost that it has now, that we would have to pay from other revenue sources anyway. So.
So why create the district?
Excuse me, sir. Respect for the meeting.
So the idea behind here is have this district do a lot of the infrastructure work using its own tax revenue, as opposed to try and shove it around. I think that's an excellent idea, because it's going to have disproportionate costs to fix the infrastructure when there's more, and it's older in this area. Thank you.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to have Deputy City Manager make some comments. I have a couple notes, too, but we'll let him cover as a response to some of the items.
Governing body, thank you. Just a couple points of clarification. I'm sure there's no confusion from this body, but for those at home listening and maybe even in the audience, our, our TIF policy does indeed reference a but-for test, but that's the but-for test speaks to the project plan, not the establishment of a district. And as you recall, those are literally two separate processes, not only in policy, but also in state law. And so the but-for only requires when someone brings a project to us, whether or not that project would succeed or not but for the incentives. Also, again, just in terms of clarifying some confusion, the, the district doesn't have to be blighted. There are a number of statutory ways that a district can be established. Blight is one of those, often the most common. But as you know, this particular district falls under the pre-1992 enterprise zone, and so it, by right, is, is a district. The other thing I would say is there is certainly some natural tension between the neighborhood revitalization and the TIF. But when, a couple, maybe a month or so ago, City Manager and I met with an economic development prospect, and they were coming to us and they wanted to do a particular piece of property, and we told them what we tell all folks who come in to see us, and that is, the incentives for you are a math problem. We can't tell you what math is going to work best for you. We'll, we'll help you work through it, of course, but in the end, it's up to you to kind of figure out how the math works best for you. And in the particular case of the dynamic core, I think that advice will remain the same for folks. Not that we want to pull properties in and out all the time, but in the end, it kind of becomes a math problem for people as to what might or might not work best for them. And we certainly realize that over the six months we've been talking about this and even longer that we've been doing other incentives. Thank you.
A final comment I add is one thing we need to remember, too, is that we establish a base for this plan. And so the property tax that is currently being played, paid by those organizations, those properties, will continue to come to our general fund. It's only the increase in value that will actually go to our TIF district in order to be utilized for infrastructure projects or to provide as an incentive to anyone that happened to decide to do a project in that area. So we'll continue to receive the funding for the general fund as if, basically, at this year's appropriation, when we establish the base. So we will be receiving some funding from those properties in that, into our general fund.
Additional comments, Councilman May.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a question in regards to what Councilwoman Hiller's mentioning about the folks that are already currently taking advantage of the neighborhood revitalization program, having to basically come back for, for another approval. Is, did I misunderstand that, or?
You've got part of it, sorry, Mayor.
City manager.
Part of it's right. Those that are already in the NRP plan, those properties would be removed from the beginning. So when it's, when the district is approved, those properties won't be included in the current TIF district. Anyone in the future that were to seek to be a part of the NRP program instead would be required to have the city council pass a change, because this is, this district is established by ordinance. In order to modify the ordinance, you have to come back to you in order to do so.
Okay. Thank you. That, that actually clears up a lot for me, because I was having some serious questions. The way that I heard it was completely different than that. So, so that's refreshing. I, I will say also, to piggyback off what you said, the words you used were innovative and bold, and that's exactly what this is. I feel like this is a way that we can clear some red tape for future projects. And the beauty of it is that there's no specific project in mind right now. So the idea, the notion that, you know, specific developers get special treatment or something is not on the table. It's, it's not a factor right now. This is us saying, we want this part of the city to thrive, and this is what we're willing to do to make it happen. We talked about this in our strategic planning session two years ago. I would say maybe my first month on the council, we had that retreat, and one of the things that we said is that we were going to identify parts of town that we thought were ripe for development, and we were going to make, take proactive steps and not reactive steps to make them happen. And that's what we're doing tonight. We're setting the stage for this to happen. We're pushing it through to a, a public hearing, and then we'll hear what the public has to say. But I think there's a lot of misconceptions right now about what we're doing, and, and I think that, you know, we know what happens if we do nothing with downtown. We've been there. We don't want to go back. We've got great momentum. We need to keep our foot on the gas, and if, and if we let off, we might stall. We don't want to do that. So I, I'm in full support of this.
Councilwoman Lesser, to be followed by Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, still do have some concerns about, about, about the downtown plan. However, that being said, I, I do think it's time to, to, to push it on down, set a timetable, get this on the agenda so we can, can actually have some more, more discussions. I do, I'm not convinced, you know, I do have some questions, some of which have been answered, and some of which are more, how, how, how do we, how does this all play out in regards to the NRPs and stuff? Do we, do we, you know, do we have a plan that says, you know, anybody who wants to come out of this automatically does have that opportunity if they do come here, you know? How we're going, how, what's the language? Those are my concerns. But I do support this, and I certainly do support us in, in moving it forward tonight. Thanks.
Councilman Jensen.
Mr. City Manager, are you envisioning that somebody who's in the TIF that would want to transition to the NRP, would that come to us on the consent agenda, very, sort of the same way as we do a, a noise ordinance?
Councilman Jensen, I believe that it could. I think that it's something that's simple enough, as we looked at the process, that we could put it on consent agenda. And obviously, anything can be pulled from the consent agenda. If, as I present the information in the memorandum and run the item through the process, if you felt that it needed more discussion, we would certainly bring it up back to the table. You would have that ability as well.
In your mind, you, you've got a way to streamline it to the point where it's not going to be a hindrance for a small developer to do that.
You know, I think that's something that's very clear to me, is that we need to look at explaining the process that we would follow step by step for someone, based on some of the questions that have been asked by Councilman Lesser and, and Councilwoman Hiller, that we need to make sure you, that you and anyone that would maybe potentially have a property, that has property in there and might potentially want to move, would know the step-by-step process, and that ensures that we understand what it is 100% before we go through and approve this, so that it's there and available and can be in a task document, sort of as an FAQ for those that will have property in there that maybe they're selling, and the person that's going to buy it wants to know, I think the NRP is better for me, what process do I need to follow? I think that's something that we want to make sure is available to you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilman Emerson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess a question for Councilwoman Hiller, and maybe for the staff as well. This resolution tonight is to set one, it's a little over a month from now, it's August, excuse me, October 8. There's nothing to say we couldn't have set a public hearing for like 45 days or 60 days. Is that correct?
Is there any, is there a max number of days? I can't remember.
Councilman Emerson, the, the TIF statute and our policy require no less than 30 and no more than 70. So as long as you're in that timeframe window.
Because I, I agree with Mr. Jensen that it, it is good to establish a, you know, a schedule so that it, it does kind of, I guess it gives us deadlines to, to do things. On the other hand, I, I share Ms. Hiller's concerns that if there are some changes, it's, you kind of run out of the clock, because on day 29, there's a change, the public hasn't had a, a real opportunity to, to digest that and to come and, and give testimony. So I, I don't know, Ms. Hiller, if there's a, if there's a time that you'd like to propose something different than the 30 days.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess what's important to me is I really think we need those, those comparisons, those examples, and so on. Even, even though I like them a month out, realistically, two weeks out, when we post the early agendas, probably enough time for most folks. So the question would be, could we get some of those things together within the next two weeks, so they were available?
Deputy say manager.
Doug's the one that's working on it, so we need to.
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Hiller, I'm, I guess maybe we would need to have a conversation about what exactly you're looking for. We have many other things going on, and we would certainly want to be able to get you the information you needed, which I think we mostly have, it sounds like. But I, I think within the next couple of weeks, we could put together whatever information you might need, if, if the city manager.
Yes.
Directed me to proceed in that fashion.
Okay, then. I'll give the city manager my shopping list. I, I mean, we've got a lot going on. Some of the people are going on the inner-city trip between now, in fact, we're going the week before, and probably get a whole bunch of new ideas that we bring back on the 8th, and, I mean, who knows? But if that's a reasonable amount of time.
Mayor, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that we have no meeting on the 5th of November, and so if we didn't have it on October 15th, it would not be till November 12th. And that's a, I haven't done the exact math, but that'd be approaching the 70-day deadline.
So, but regardless, I mean, I think that the brunt of the work right now that is expected is expected of the staff. So if, if you feel comfortable providing the team with what they need before that meeting, I think that we would be okay.
I think to give us a little more cushion, I think we simply look at the October 15th meeting instead of the October 8th, just move it back one more week for us, to ensure that if we put a draft together and, and then, you know, start working on that, that'd give us an additional week, gives us, you know.
So just for protocol.
It would still have to be produced, basically, the last week of September in order, because everybody would be gone for the inner-city visit. So it would be basically produced in three weeks. That's probably enough time. So I think, though, we look at the October 15th instead of October 8th as under.
So we were discussing while you were talking, and I think that there is, there is desire from the person that made the motion to make this a friendly amendment as part of their original motion. Does the second concur?
What am I concurring here?
Moving, making the amendment to move it to the 15th of October.
Well, and I have been listening. I just, I'm not quite sure why we're doing this, because it seems like if there's only one or two people that have questions, can you not just meet with staff, get it over with them, and then carry on without pushing it back? Or do we all have to wait, even though, you know, maybe five or six of us don't have any questions?
Actually, I'm looking at the date, and if we do October 8th, it has to be in, actually, the information has to be produced the same date, more or less, either way, because the inner-city visit, everything would be produced on the 26th for the 8th, and what the, we would probably already have it done. We might have a little more time that would give it to Brenda, you know, the 30th and 1st would be additional time for us.
So you think that you'd be able to do it on the same date?
The hard part is understanding exactly. So if I produce something for Councilwoman Hiller and it doesn't meet her need, then the timing would push it off a week. And I guess I would also defer to the developer. We're talking about what they're requesting and whether or not it's their willing, their, their request would be okay in order to wait a week. So I'd also.
So just to ensure that we address the concern that council, that deputy mayor has, maybe the best way would be to have a motion, an additional motion in the process right now, to see if we could move the date. And if that motion dies, then that gives us the answer that you were seeking. Would that be amicable? Would you be making a motion to change the date of the hearing?
What? I don't think so. What am I, why would I?
Well, somebody would, some, exactly, you're the one saying no.
Yeah.
Pardon me, Deputy Mayor. So Councilwoman Ortiz makes a motion to move the, the public hearing date to October 15th, correct?
I will accept it.
We have a second? Because at this point, it's an independent motion so that we could vote on it.
Oh, yes.
So is that a second? Okay, we have a second. So this motion is solely to change the date of the public hearing? And the next motion would be to approve that we're setting that date and that we are having the public hearing. Councilman Lesser, questions?
And how many days is that?
One week.
It would postpone it seven days. So instead of being, we're on, we're on September 3rd, it'd be 28 and another 14, so that'd be 42 days from now that we would have the hearing.
So my, then my question is, probably for Doug, then, is if that's the case, and then more information comes out at that point in time, and then we decide to postpone that for another week, are we, are we able to do that still within 70 days?
I'll verbally say yes, so that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So what we have on the table right now is nothing but a motion to move the date to give staff an additional week to gather information. Okay? So if there's no other questions on this, we proceed by voting.
Okay, we have eight yes. Councilmembers Claire and Padilla voting no.
Okay, so at this point in time, we have in front of us a motion to approve the setting of the public hearing. Are there any other questions on this item? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Councilwoman Hiller. Ms. Hiller.
I pushed it one.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to item D, if the clerk would read.
May.
Oh, Councilwoman Hiller.
If I could make just a comment, I want to thank everyone. I'm, I'm, I really hear what people have said about wanting to get started talking on this, realistically, especially. If I could make just a comment, I want to thank everyone. I really hear what people have said about wanting to get started talking on this, realistically, especially if at least half of us are going to be on the inner-city trip. It's all in my district. And so once, once those questions come up, I'm going to be bombarded with either ideas or concerns or whatever. And so allowing not so much even the, to the 15th on that communication, but if, again, for the Greater Chico Partnership and DTI staff as well, if, if there is a flurry of public conversation, it will give us a little more time to get that rolling and do what we can before the hearing. So thank you all.
All right. Item B, if the clerk would read.
D is an update and possible action on the proposed camping ordinance.
At this point in time, we move to Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Number nine, if you sit here long enough, flowers will grow.
Nice.
Anyway, I had to throw that out there to number nine. Public Health and Safety Committee, and this has been here a while too, we're going to have to do something. But I wanted to bring an update. It was kind of disturbing at our last meeting to hear that we got down to, I believe it was like 25% of homeless people on the river. And then all of a sudden, we went back up over 100% because a whole bunch of the population had came in from Lawrence and Kansas City. And then that was, that was very mind-boggling to the, to the committee, at least, at least to me, to hear that. I do want to point out some good things that was mentioned. Forty-three people, let's see, 31 vouchers were issued, which included 43 people, were distributed on February 25th through, through March 4th. And let's see, to date, 12 households with 19 individuals had been able to get off the streets into a residence, which was really, really high, and we were proud of that. We did ask Cory with the Department of Housing and Development, did I say that right? Because now with our neighborhood relations aren't big, sorry, sit here long and you still remember the old name. And she was, you know, we were asking her why it takes such a long process, and she was just saying, it's really not us, it's, you know, Topeka Housing Authority to try to get them to move. And, but, but it's a money thing as well because if they can get, get on Topeka Housing, then that, that helps their money to pay their rent and stuff like that, to, which provides for more people. I did want to note that Officer Clam had talked about, let me see, since the beginning of the city ID program in November 2018, 160 IDs have been created with another 60 applicants on Sergeant Clam's desk, and we challenged him to get those off. And out of the 163 IDs, about 25 of those have been converted to state IDs. So that was a really positive thing that we heard, that we were very grateful for. He said the pilot program is going smoothly, but was concerned with making the rounds of all the other individuals that had come on to the banks, that he was going to, to talk to them as well. When I heard that the mission was closing, I just kind of cringed, you know, because I think about, the first thing I think about is our homeless that go over there and bathe and shower and, and what a need that we have for them. I think the committees, we need to look at if we're going to be able to put this ordinance to rest. And one of the things to have this ordinance is that we have to provide, when we come upon them, we have to provide a place for them to go. And we don't have that place. And with, with the mission, they haven't said we would be that place, but we just haven't been able to find that place. So I, let me, let me make this clear. So I'm, I'm on the banks and I'm camping, and we have to provide a safe place for them to go that evening. If they refuse, then we would write them a ticket, and that's the way that the ordinance is wrote. But it also, and Lisa, if you'll help me out here, that was part of their constitution, right? Is that correct? That, and that we had, that we had to do that. It seems like we've gotten a lot of things in place, but that's the one big piece that I see that we just can't, can't target right now. The homeless task force, they've thought about it. Again, it comes back to finances and a money issue. So I think the committee is going to have to look at what, what we really are going to have to do, whether it's just to not adopt it. I don't know, Lisa, what, what are, we can't table it, right? I know we've been going on and on, but I, I think we're just going to have to figure out some type of closure for it, but because we can't table it.
That's correct, Councilmember Ortiz. If you have another meeting scheduled to discuss the issue, then a decision can be made if you want to withdraw the ordinance or recommend it's approved.
Um, I think what saddens me and what gives me joy at the same time is that so many groups have come together that say that we want to help. We want to help these people. And, but again, it's, it's just, just a money issue. And when I look at the mission and they, they have their Mission Possible going on and the cry that they, the plea and the cry that they have sent out there, it's overwhelming. I think it's great from small kids to different walks of life that are just pouring in money to the mission that is mostly needed. But at the same time, we just don't have anybody set in stone to say, we will take them for the night, we will take them for a night or two. And that's part of that ordinance. So that's kind of where we're at. And I, and I challenge the committee to kind of think, think about it before our next meeting of what we really are going to have to do because there's been so many people. And the people that have been taken off the street, Dr. Russell Burton, he took it upon himself, his own mission, and he's been bringing in people to Cory, and he's been bringing them down here. So he's kind of been out there just spinning the wheels for us, which is, which has been a great thing. But there's still a lot out there. And also with the Lawrence mission closing, I know a lot of people have come in from Lawrence as well because I'm starting to see them by the creek beds in East Topeka and stuff like that, tents everywhere. So that's kind of been my concern. You're welcome to come to the next meeting, but I will be challenging our committee members to really look forward and see what we can do. I don't, I don't know, know how much longer we could really prolong this. That's all I have unless Councilman Mays or Karen Hiller has anything to add to that. But that's where we're at.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot to add. I am excited for our next meeting to, to learn how the, the Block Party for the Homeless went. I know that, I spoke with Sergeant Clam, and he had mentioned that they were, they were pretty excited about having that. They were hoping to speak with, with the residents and get some information about, you know, where, where folks are coming from, how they ended up in Topeka, that kind of thing. Because the, the sort of explosion of the homeless population down there recently is alarming. And, and to my knowledge, there's, there's not a great explanation as to date. So hopefully, hopefully that sheds some light on it and, and we can take some steps to address it. Thank you.
I would just add, Chair Ortiz did a great job of describing where we're at and that the meeting is coming up. It is, correct me if I've got the location wrong, but it is Monday, September 16th, from 3:00 to 5:00 in the executive conference room in City Hall on the third floor. So if anybody wants to come or prepare to come, that's, that's when the meeting about the camping ordinance will be.
Deputy Mayor?
If I remember correctly, this is brought up by myself because of the Noto District and some concerns I'd heard. TPD had their hands tied. Is there anything that we can do to address that without the other? I mean, does it have to be all-inclusive? And I know we had talked about the tent cities, did that go anywhere? What have we, that was, I just wanted to know, I could have watched the meetings, I guess, to figure out what happened to that. But I wanted to know if that was all-inclusive, like can we just say, no camping on First Fridays? I mean, can we somehow address that without the other?
Chair Ortiz?
Thanks. I don't believe so, but I'll let Lisa tell us exactly the three things that we have to have. And, and as far as the tent city, we, we didn't really like that. Some of the people and some of the staff and the task force got with me and they thought that these are already individuals that are vulnerable, and if we had like a place for them, we'd have to monitor them. And then, and then not only that, then people would come and rob them because they know that they're, are most vulnerable there. Just, just, yeah. You're going to call Luther up? Come on, Luther. Come on down. Don't, don't look at the city manager, just don't look at him. Luther, can you tell us what we need to pass this ordinance, what we have to have? We can't, we have to have those three things.
Well, where you are right now is you've kind of got a choice to make. What you have before you to consider is what I would call a total ban on camping. You're not allowed to camp anywhere in the city. And in order to do that, constitutionally, you have to have an alternative for somebody to sleep that is homeless. If they can't sleep in public, where can they sleep? And that is where we get into the discussion about shelter capacity and other alternatives like a tent city or things like this. That's not the only way we can go. We could take this ordinance, redraft it, and do what would be called a partial ban, where you can't camp here, but you can camp other places. Maybe we prohibit, just for example, we prohibit camping under a bridge. Due to the fire that we had here a while back, causing damage to our bridge, we would have an interest in prohibiting that type of conduct. Now, the difference is, if you are banning camping only in certain places, we don't have the same concern that we do with a part, with a total ban because there are, there are alternatives available to the person. They can't camp under the bridge, but they're free to go camp anywhere else. They can't camp on private property, but they can camp anywhere else. It just depends on what places you want to designate in your ordinance. So that is one alternative that you have right now because what we've run into is we don't have the shelter capacity or an alternative to really make a total ban feasible. So Plan B would either be to explore a partial ban or, I suppose, drop it and not ban camping at all.
So I guess that's something that the committee would need to look at so we can bring it back.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Can I ask a question about a partial ban?
Sure.
If, and I'm not suggesting that we do it, but if the city chose to require, I think some of the things we read had to do with just permitted camping. Like you could, you couldn't camp for more than one overnight on public property without a permit, which would allow a, a process that would work with both homeless individuals as well as recreational campers on the river or whatever. Is, is that a possible partial limit?
That would have difficulties of its own because it, it...
Somebody would have to do it.
You wouldn't be allowed to camp anywhere without a permit? Is that what you're saying?
More than, more than one night or two nights or something like that.
The difficulty would that be was what would happen if you had a person that didn't have that permit? And maybe the, the complexity of the process or how difficult it was for them to get the permit. You might potentially have that same argument about if they don't have the permit, where can they go? And if you can't camp here, where can you sleep for tonight? And we eventually would run into the same issue with the shelter. It comes down to the alternative. If you can't sleep here, where can you sleep? And whether you have a permit or it's just banned outright, similar concerns.
Thanks. Talk about it further in committee, I'm sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the report, Chair.
Thank you. See everybody on the 16th. There's plenty of chairs.
Thank you for the report, Luther. We move on to the next item, item E. If the clerk would read.
D is an update and possible action on the proposed traffic and pedestrian safety ordinance.
Now, go to Chair Jenson.
Good evening. So as you'll recall, quite some time ago, we discussed the possible ramifications of banning pedestrian interaction with traffic, as there was an issue with folks darting out in traffic around stoplights to get money, food, other things. At the time, the committee decided that, yes, that that definitely warranted discussion at the council level because it is dangerous and distracting for drivers to have somebody intermediate walking up and down, holding a sign, or darting in and out of traffic. So we had put a pause on this specifically because this does disproportionately affect some folks whom this would be their only source of income. And we wanted to be cognizant of that decision and try to make sure that, that we as a community had done what we could do in order to help those folks who were displaced by this. And a lot of that work centered around Councilwoman Ortiz and her committee in that a lot of the players were the exact same folks that would need to be involved in this process as well. So we've sort of been waiting behind that team so that they can get all their work done. And we're not asking all of these volunteers to try and essentially do what's basically the same thing, just with a slightly different context. It sounds to me, Councilwoman Ortiz, like your, your committee is essentially wrapping up with what our community is able to do. And my takeaway on that would be it's probably time to bring this ordinance to the council so we can discuss it and discuss what your team has been able to put together to help the folk who really do indeed have an issue and need help. So with that, unless there's any questions, I would ask the city manager if he could queue this up for the foreseeable future, or in the foreseeable future, so we could discuss it again. It would probably be great to have a refresher and then go from there. Yes, ma'am?
Deputy Mayor?
What I remember was that you talked about putting together a super-duper committee of the two. Have you done that?
We have not because Councilwoman Ortiz was doing such a great job, I didn't feel it was necessary for me to get in her way.
So is that off the table, then?
Unless Councilwoman Ortiz feels we really need it. I mean, she's really done a great job of championing this, and I, I don't foresee, in my opinion, that, that any benefit could be gained from that. But again, I will yield to you.
But didn't you just say that the two would inter, intertwine?
Yes. And so basically, the idea behind the single committee was that we're not asking volunteers to work with two committees. But Councilwoman Ortiz has really taken the charge on this, and so I've stayed out of her way because she's doing such a fantastic job. So I, at this point, no, I don't foresee a need to convene a larger committee with players that are already working on it.
I just, I just didn't know if that would, maybe then we would not have the need to discuss this again as we have in the past with the same questions if you guys had already gotten together and kind of narrowed it down. That was my, that was why I asked.
So we, we haven't specifically talked with that team about this, other than we had delivered some information to them quite some time ago. I expect they're still working with this in the back of their mind as well, and that here's a group of folks that are going to be disproportionately affected by a change the council makes.
All right. Seeing no other comments or questions on this item, thank you for your report.
Yes, ma'am.
We now move on to the non-action items. Item 6A, if the clerk would read.
A is discussion of proposed amendments to Title II of the municipal code to effectuate a comprehensive update of personnel-related provisions.
City Manager, oh, Chair Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. So back in March, the Policy and Finance Committee was tasked with conducting a comprehensive overview of personnel-related language contained in various city documents. And we discovered that much of the language contained in the personnel code had not been reviewed or updated for decades. We learned that when the form of government changed in 2004, changes were not made to reflect the fact that the city manager is now responsible for administrative matters. reflect the fact that the city manager is now responsible for administrative matters related to personnel. And we reviewed the relevant charter provisions on this subject. We walked through each section of the current personnel code and discussed where all administrative language within the personnel code could be found in the new personnel manual. We talked about the more detailed content contained in the manual. We walked through each section of the current personnel code and discussed where all policy-related language within the personnel code can be found in the Topeka Municipal Code. We talked about language currently contained in the personnel code that has not been codified in the TMC, but should be. So after eight meetings, and hours of work, we unanimously recommend to the governing body that the personnel-related provisions contained in Title II of the TMC be updated, that policy-related language currently contained with the personnel code be codified by moving, moving this language into the TMC, and that the old personnel code be repealed. So, does any committee members have any additional comments? Does that kind of sum it up?
Councilwoman Jensen.
I would just like to thank the committee and the staff for what is an incredible amount of work. I mean, I cannot believe the amount of stuff that we got through as efficiently as we did in those meetings. So just kudos to everybody who worked on this. Great job.
Additional comments? I do want to say the same. I think that Chair Cohen, you took on a bear.
Thank you.
Because I don't think that people have a full understanding or a grasp of how much documentation had to be gone through. And to make sure that everything aligned was big. So thank you so much for the work that your team did.
Staff has a presentation that they wish to provide.
So we're going to start off this story with basically a history and background of this issue. And it started when I first, I don't know, I think I was here a year, and I started hearing about how folks kind of went through the answering of questions from employees that they received, how supervisors received information, how they got to the answers that they needed. And the process was overwhelming. There was a personnel code that needed to be reviewed, there were separate administrative policies that needed to be reviewed, separate administrative rules and regulations that needed to be reviewed, then the Topeka Municipal Code, in addition to all of the bargaining unit agreements. So that sounded kind of wacky to me, so we pulled out the personnel code and started there. The very first section I looked at, and it said, "The provisions of Charter, of Charter Ordinance A2-3 calling for the adoption of a comprehensive personnel manual," or code, so personnel system. So I looked at Charter Ordinance A2-3. And instead of saying that verbiage there, it said something completely different, as you can see. So I dug into the background of Charter Ordinance A2-3, and I found that the genesis of that Charter Ordinance was Charter Ordinance 65. It did contain that language. And the other thing that that Charter Ordinance did, besides calling for a comprehensive personnel system, was it changed the form of government from commission form to a strong mayor, council, city administrative officer form of government. So it did those two things. So what happened to that language? It's still in the personnel code, it's reflected in Charter Ordinance 65. So I found out, I looked at Charter Ordinance 94, and it was repealed. Charter Ordinance 65 was repealed by Charter Ordinance 94. That ordinance was passed in 2004. And what that ordinance did was change the form of government from mayor, city administrative officer, council, to manager, council manager form of government, which is what we have today. That happened 15 years ago. And so, what happened is the personnel code was last adopted in 91, there had been no updates to it since that point in time that were substantive in nature. The form of government had changed two times since then, again, had it not been updated. So what we did was start reviewing. We looked through that entire personnel code. The Charter ordinances that basically support the form of government, and the fact that the administrative provisions of personnel need to be done administratively, our Charter Section A2 dash, gosh, I just need to read it, because I can't read anything. A2 dash 24A8. And that states basically, one of the subsections is, "The mayor shall have no administrative powers." Another Charter section that's, you know, applicable is A2 dash 25A. "The council and mayor shall be vested with all powers of legislation and municipal affairs, but shall have no administrative powers." Then it goes into the authority that this individual has to my right, city manager. And it states that it shall be his power and his duty to administer the affairs of the city, and that includes all personnel-related matters. He runs the departments, he makes sure that folks are in place, that can do their jobs, and make sure that those folks in turn follow through with their subordinates. So after we took a look at all this information, what the form of government meant, and what the Charter now says, and how that verbiage does not match with what's in the personnel code, we started a comprehensive review of that document, just to determine how much of that document was actually administrative versus policy. And the underlying purpose was to separate those two things, to separate out the language that was administrative in nature from the language that was policy-related. And we found that basically 90% of what's in the personnel code is administrative in nature. So we had to figure out a way to fix it, because if we let it ride the way it was, then we were basically in violation of our own Charter. So Sean's going to go through a little bit of the comprehensive review process that we went through, which basically, we have been working on this for about two years. We've met twice a month, two hours each month, each meeting, so it's been a process, but we think the outcome is something that's workable. So I'll have Sean kind of walk through that.
So our comprehensive review process included looking at every policy and administrative rule and reg that the city employees have to adhere to. We also, like Lisa said, reviewed the personnel code. And what we did is, by reviewing every document, is to make sure that we were in compliance, make sure it was our current processes, make sure that that document was sound and up to date. And then, once that document was complete, then we went ahead and followed our own internal processes, which we provided department directors an overview for their input and review of each document. When we were, we would probably take off a chunk of about six documents at one time. And so what we did was then schedule employee hearings, because our, the personnel code does outline that we want employees' input, we do think that that's a valuable tool, is to get employees' input, find out how it's working for them in their departments, those are the supervisors that are doing it on a day-to-day basis, find out how it's working. So we set those public hearings. They're scheduled at three, we customarily do it at three hearing dates, times, and different locations for employees. They can also submit any comments they have in writing. Once that hearings are set, then I would send out a communication to all the union leaders and all the employees, making sure that everybody was notified of those hearing dates and locations. Once those hearings were completed, then those documents were finalized and submitted to the city manager for his approval and signature. Once those were signed off by the city manager, then we post them to the city's Intranet for at least 14 days prior to their effective date, and then send out that corresponding email to all employees, letting them know what documents, giving them the final version, and letting them know when that effective date would take place. So once that was all completed, every policy and ARR went through that whole process, that comprehensive review, the policy hearings, et cetera, and signed off, then we incorporated them all into one document. It's known to us, we are calling it the Personnel Manual. So we're hoping that that one document is a one-stop shop for all personnel provision for employees to go to, supervisors, HR staff, anyone that just can go directly to that document and be able to find that provision. So to the right is a snapshot of what it looks like on our city's Intranet site now. So when you go to the Personnel Manual, you're going to see those top four buckets on top. One is the Complete Personnel Manual, it's over 250 pages. We have a cross-reference table that's available, so that as employees are making that transition from knowing a policy number and ARR number, they'll now know where to find it and which section of that Personnel Manual. Forms and agreements, we had specific forms that were tied to certain policies. The best example is if you're a new employee and you work in a building that requires a certain parking place, you will have to fill out an application for that hang tag. So that form or application would still need to be available for employees. So that bucket is where you'll find all those employee forms. And then we, of course, included the link to all labor documents, because if an employee is covered by a labor contract, they're going to need to check that labor contract first, because those supersede all personnel provisions. So we tried to make that an easy reference. The lower level is where we took that Personnel Manual and divided them out into those personnel sections. So each section has its own bucket, and when you take that bucket, then you can click on that subsection, and it will take you right to it. So we're trying to minimize the searching and that the number of clicks an employee or supervisor has to just get to that specific personnel provision that they need. What's also included in the Personnel Manual is the city's vision, mission, and value statements adopted by the governing body. We also have a table of contents, so it's easy to find those specific sections, and we have a reference table, as I discussed earlier. And this is just a snapshot of what that looks like. So the example I use is funeral leave. You're going to find that in Section 6 of Absences and Leaves in Subsection 6.10. And on the right-hand side, you find that corresponding, that it was previously in ARR So one of the things, as I discussed, is the importance of getting the employees' input, whether you're a supervisor or just a frontline employee. What you say and do, and how, and how the personnel provisions affect you, you probably know better than we do. So we wanted to make sure that in our Personnel Manual, that we kept that section, so that in Section 1.5, that any provisions or any amendments to the Personnel Manual would follow those similar, similar processes, where we'll conduct employee hearings for their inputs, still, has to be signed off and approved by the city manager, we're still going to post it on the Intranet, have those email communications prior to and at the conclusion, and then notice up those effective dates prior to them becoming effective, so that we're given sufficient notice to all employees for any changes to that Personnel Manual. So then, once that was all complete, then we moved on to the evaluation of the Personnel Code, such as Lisa said. We went section by section. On the right-hand side, you're going to see just a little snapshot of the table of contents of the Personnel Code. All of the items in green are items that we can identify that are captured in the Personnel Manual. The items in red ink are those legislative or policy-related provisions that we believe should be incorporated in the Topeka Municipal Code. Since the red items take up less than 10%, and we felt that it was just important to move those over, those are policy-related, and they need to be in the Topeka Municipal Code. Some examples of those include residency requirement, severance pay. So upon codification of this language into the TMC, the Personnel Code can then be repealed. So kind of wanted to give you a snapshot of what we currently do, when we talk about that we have to kind of hunt, hunt around to make sure that we're giving appropriate guidance to employees or supervisors. So right now, if an employee calls, we're going to have to find out if they're covered by a labor contract, because if they are, again, I said that supersedes, if their contract is silent, that's also when we're going to look into the following documents. Make sure it's not covered in the municipal code. Then we look into the Personnel Code, we look at administrative policies, administrative rules and regs, and any of the SOPs that we might have on hand. So in this proposal, we're talking about the labor contracts, the municipal code, Personnel Code, and the administrative rules and regs. So by repealing the Personnel Code, and we've moved all those admin documents into the Personnel Manual, we believe we have provided efficiency in our process for all employees on the labor contracts, go, make reference to the Topeka Municipal Code, and then the Personnel Manual. So an example of a post-Personnel Manual process is, employee calls or they're wondering, "How many days do I get for a funeral leave?" So first of all, they may call HR, and we're happy to look into that, but now we're hoping through these efficiencies, they can go directly to their labor contract, if they're not covered by that, or it's silent, they'll go directly to the Personnel Manual, like under Section 6, under Absences and Leaves, and go directly to the subsection 6.10 for bereavement leave. So we're hoping that we've made it easier for the employee supervisor to get the answer, especially if you're needing funeral leave, you're kind of needing that answer today. It's not something that we want to take up to a few days to, to look at all those documents and find that answer for that employee. We want them to be able to move on and be with their family and get the time off that they need. So after all of this was completed, we felt like we were in a good position to then come to the governing body to make those recommendations with those changes to the Topeka Municipal Code.
So Sean mentioned, and as I've mentioned before, 90% of the Personnel Code as it exists now is administrative in nature, 10% is policy-related, and that's the part that the Policy and Finance Committee placed its primary focus on. And as Councilmember Cohen mentioned, there were eight meetings, each of those meetings were several hours long. We actually went through the administrative provisions with that group. We showed them where the Personnel Code provision could be found in the new Personnel Manual, so that they would know that that language was addressed somewhere. And we actually showed them how the new language was a little bit more robust and explanatory for the employees to see when they pulled up the Personnel Manual. So then what we wanted to focus on is the 10% that's left, and that's the legislative policy-related procedures, and that's what you'll find in the TMC. So what you have before you today is, as I said, the governing, the Policy and Finance Committee met, and they voted 3-0 to move this forward. We've got an ordinance that contains several provisions in it that we think are pretty important. It's, the ordinance itself is really difficult to follow, so I'm going to tell you that upfront. Usually, we'll walk through the ordinance when we talk about language changes. This one, that's really not going to be, we're not going to be able to do it, and that's mainly because of the re-codification process. The city clerk's office is moving forward with that, that'll happen more towards the end of the year. But in anticipation of these changes that we were making, we reached out to that company and asked them, "What do you think about Title II? Take a look at it, how's it structured, what improvements can we make?" And they did come back and make some suggestions, and they suggested three divisions. First division would just kind of be a catch-all, it would address officers, the emergency management plan, just some of those things, kind of more of a catch-all. And then Division 2 is for employees. So that's where we tried to grab from Title II all of the employment-related language and put that all in one place, which is Division 2, and that's really what this ordinance is about. The other division that they suggested was to have a division on boards and commissions, because if you have read through Title II, you'll know that some of that stuff is just kind of thrown in various locations, and we're just trying to group it together a little bit better, so when you go to look, it makes more sense to you. So when you see the ordinance, it'll look crazy, but it's just a lot of reorganization and a lot of renumbering and putting things in the correct place. The 10% of the code that's policy-related, most of the language that came from the Personnel Code, you'll find in chapters, proposed chapters 105 and 110. And I put a little piece of paper on your, on your desks, it's under the proposals. It actually shows the clean version of those two chapters, Chapter 105, 2.105 and 2.110. And there's a little red asterisk by each of the sections that come directly from the Personnel Code. They're cleaned up a little bit, because the Personnel Code hasn't really been touched in so long, and they're elaborated upon, but those same streams of thought are pulled from that Personnel Code and are now found in this TMC document. So I put asterisks by those, and you'll see that there's quite a lot of them. Yeah, it looks like this, but it's got little asterisks on the side. So you can just see how many provisions were pulled, and those are all in those two chapters in particular. But the other thing we did, besides pulling that language from the code, is to take a look at the language that's already in Title II, that's related to employees. And a lot of this was the most interesting part of our journey, because it involved a lot of digging around, we had to do some historical research on some things. We found a provision in Title II under the Benefits Chapter that deals with social security, but it wasn't called that, it was called Old Age Survivor's Insurance. And it kept making reference to the Department of Civil Service at the state, but we looked on the state directive, there's no such thing. So we had to try various means to find out what, what is, what is the successor of the Department of Civil Service? And we had Ian, the mayor's intern on it, we had our intern on it. And we had Ian, the mayor's intern on it, we had our intern on it, and we finally determined it's the Department of Administration. So what we did was ship that whole chapter over to them and had them take a look at it and give us their thoughts, and they did. They took a look at it and they made strike-throughs and added language, said this is an outdated federal statute, don't use it anymore, we don't follow it, we don't do it this way anymore, and they gave us suggested language provisions which we've incorporated into this ordinance. There was another chapter called the Fireman's Relief Association, and I wasn't familiar with that, and it hadn't been updated for the last 40 years, but we have been in touch with the treasurer of that organization as well as its president and asked them, "What do you think about this chapter?" They said, "We don't even know about it. We follow the state statute." So in talking with them, they were comfortable with just having a provision that basically says who the members are, and it's all sworn employees of the fire department, and they said, "We just refer to state statute and we'll just continue to do that." So we just made a cross-reference to the state statute there. It's important to note, though, that there are a couple of chapters and articles that we're going to suggest repealing. One of them is the article under the benefits chapter dealing with the 1939 retirement plan. And those who are eligible for that particular plan, they had to be eligible on April something of 1951. And so after trying to find out from finance and HR, "Do you know anything about this?" We finally just got a calculator out and like, "Okay, if you're 60 years old in 1951, how old are you now?" And you're 120. So we're just going to suggest that maybe that be repealed because there's nobody that's eligible for that particular plan anymore. And another one that we're going to suggest repealing is the Police and Fire Pension Fund. I think it's a separate article under benefits. And the reason for that is because there's a, I think, a 1969 and a 1976 ordinance that basically pulls all the folks in police and fire service into KPNF, which is part of papers. So nobody's under this pension system that exists under the TMC. So we think that needs to come out as well. So those are some of the highlights. We have talked to most everyone about it to get their thoughts. We had some input from some folks, and I've been asked to kind of go through some of the proposals that were made. Some good thoughts came through this process, and I will go through each of these. There's just five of them, and you know, staff's looked at them. We think, you know, it makes sense and it's fine with us to proceed. One of them, and you have a, it says Proposal 1, and they're just all tied together, 2, 3, 4, 5. So there's five of them, but just to go through them quickly. One of them deals with the Civil Service Commission, and we had had some discussion on this. At first, we came up with the idea of doing non-substantive changes to the Civil Service Commission chapter, and then talking with the members of the Civil Service Commission about what their thoughts are, and then coming back later with some more, I guess, meaty revisions. So the suggestion was made to perhaps at this point in time just renumber it and not make any changes to it, and once we've had the opportunity to talk to members of the commission, then bring that forward, and that's absolutely fine with us if that's okay with the body. We can, you know, make that change to the ordinance and file it with you for consideration on September 10th, but that was one of the proposals that was made. Another one has to do with the Fireman's Relief Association, and this is a really good point because when we initially put together the language saying who were members of that association, it said all paid members. So the question was raised, who are paid members? And so we did some more digging, and it actually is all sworn employees. We checked with the president of the association. So replacing paid members with sworn employees is absolutely fine with us, with staff, if it is with you, and that's up to you all. Another proposal's dealing with the Chapter on Employment Practices and Diversity and Inclusion. There's a provision in there that talks about how that particular section is not mandatory when it comes to part-time, temporary, or seasonal employees. So the proposal is to just delete that sentence and just make it applicable to everybody as HRCs fit because it would be applicable to everybody. So that's a quick one. And then on the workers' compensation article in the benefits chapter, a suggestion was made because of the fact that the risk manager has been placed so many different places. It's been in HR, and then it's been in legal, and then it's been contracted out to just change all the references to risk manager to Director of Human Resources for his or her designee. That makes perfect sense. That's fine. And then there were two other changes that staff kind of caught. When you read down through that chapter, it's a little bit unclear when it references director as to what director you're talking about. You could almost think it's a director of a department, but it's not in the context it's written. It's talking about the director of the Department of Labor. So we made some clarifications in there to make sure that that was, you know, fully understandable to everybody because we missed it, and that was important to fix. And the other is, I think Proposal 5 deals with the police benefit account. On this particular one, we had initially opted not to make any changes to the particular section, and so in the ordinance, you'll just see that it's been renumbered, but the suggestion was made to actually revise it and include this particular section to make it clear that, there was some confusion on where that particular account fell. Originally, it was part of, it was called a fund up until June or January, I can't remember which, of 2010. And at that point in time, that fund was turned into an account and kind of, I guess, lopped under the law enforcement special account. So this language would just make it clear that the police benefit account is an account, it's not a separate fund, and that account is part of the special law enforcement fund. So those are kind of the five proposals that were brought forward, and I just wanted to go through each one of those with you and see if any of those or all of those were acceptable. Staff certainly has no objection to any of them. I think that's most everything that I wanted to touch on. Sean, do you have anything else?
No, we're just here for questions or clarification. Happy to answer.
I'm sure that both the council and the public are scintillated by this deep, profound policy. And she was looking at me back there and just going, "Uh-uh." This profound HR information. But it's kind of funny. This is the meat and potatoes of what we do. These are the policies that regulate the way that we interact with our employees, and this is very important stuff, but it doesn't always mean that it's the most fun and sometimes exciting. I find it cool. I find it cool, but then I'm a nerd. Councilwoman Mays.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa, could you repeat all that? Now, just out of curiosity, there were a couple of items that you mentioned where you were saying, "Well, we could do this or we could do that." What's being proposed? I mean, I know we had met early on, you and a couple of other people from your team, and is this the same as what we talked about then, or are there further changes that you're wanting to make?
So the ordinance that's attached to the agenda item right now is what we all talked about. And then after we talked to everyone and we got everybody's comments together, there were five suggestions that came out of that. And we looked at each of those, and staff is okay with them. It makes sense to us. It's fine with us. So we can make those changes in between now and the September 10th meeting if they all sound okay to everyone. So that's definitely up to the body.
Do we all just need to nod our heads? Sounds good. Thank you.
I just want to make it a point again of saying thank you, not only to the staff. We've had several meetings on this one, and especially to the committee. This is committee's work at its best, and I want to say thank you to Chair Cohen for your leadership in this process. This was big. This was big. Councilwoman Hiller.
And I want to second that because if people want more scintillating reading, they can read the minutes of that committee and see all the discussions that we didn't get, you know, in case anybody wants a refresher. Good work.
Thank you.
And we can all sort of know that there's some technical things, like I know when we talked, there was something in the Blue Cross contract that needed to be clarified on one thing, and you've got the Human Relations Commission working on whether we would include definitions or not.
Correct.
So lots of fine-tuning still going on. So good for you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very, oh, Deputy Mayor.
Actually, I want to thank the constituents that called me that did the homework before they called me and got the background because that really helps have an intelligent conversation when they have read through, you know, the agenda and have some background and has the knowledge to then discuss it. And so that was very helpful, and I had, you know, a few of those, so it was scintillating to them, too.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Thank you very much. We now move on to our next one-hour presentation. Item B is the clerk who read.
B is an overview of the graphics design rapid process information event.
Mayor, tonight we have a presentation. This is an item that went through our RPI process, and tonight Taylor Schley will run through a presentation discussing our RPI for graphic design requests. Taylor?
Hello. Before Taylor gets up here, I just wanted to give you all a quick overview of City 4. So back in June, we did this RPI process with graphics requests, and Taylor was the team leader for that, but she is one of four members of City 4, and we're the communications department. We work with every single city department. What we do is mostly all internal, and graphic design's a small but important piece. You guys see Taylor's graphics everywhere all the time, everything on our social media, all of our flyers. She does a lot of really great work. So some of what City 4 does is we do graphics, we do videos, we broadcast all of the meetings. Right now, we have three people who are running the broadcast. There's two upstairs in a booth and one right behind you, and we have, you know, all the meetings. So that's a lot. We do all the crisis communication, public relations, media relations, social media, press events, press conferences, and photography. Now I'm going to hand this over to Taylor.
So hello, Mayor, governing body. My name is Taylor Schley. I am the production specialist, so I handle the photography, I assist with the social media, and I do the graphics, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. So our mission during this RPI was to create a standardized graphic design process, and the reason why we wanted to do that is because we had issues with people submitting requests through different avenues. Some people were using City Works, which some people didn't know how to use City Works, so then it was kind of confusing on that end. Some people were submitting things through email, so we didn't really have one standard channel where people were submitting things. Secondly, we had a lack of communication on graphics details, so which I'll touch on a little bit more later. Some people didn't understand exactly what they were needing or what they were requesting, and also some people just weren't providing all of the information up front for what they were needing. And then lastly, we had inconsistent branding. Some of our stuff was looking one way, some of our stuff looks another way, so we also touched on that as well. So our RPI team was myself, Latoya Martinez from Neighborhood Relations, Ryan Woolaway from Utilities, Gretchen Cannon from PD, and Michelle Smith from HR. And the reason why that these people were chosen to be on the RPI team is because they either work in a department that requests a lot of graphics or puts out a lot of information to the public where they would be utilizing, you know, graphics or social media. And Ryan and Gretchen specifically, they work in positions where they need to utilize a lot of graphics and media-type stuff like that in their positions. And then we also had our facilitators, which was Kelly Baker from the city manager's office, Brandon Bayless from Public Works, Mike Hall from Planning, and they were all awesome. They kept us on track, made sure we were really tackling what were the issues at hand and making sure we came up with good solutions. And then our bench strength players were from IT, and that was Sherry Schuenover and Eric Blakenship, and we got with them to work out some of the technical things that we wanted to do and really find out what was going to be available to us to streamline this process. So some of the barriers that we had was, as I said before, all of the information was not provided up front. So our solution to that was we came up with a graphics request form that will be available on the Internet, and that will collect all of the information up front. What is the deadline? What file type do you need? You know, what information needs to be on there? Because a lot of the stuff that was holding us back is like, at first, someone would send something, but there's information missing, so then I have to go back and say, "Oh, well, what does this mean?" Or, "What did you want on that?" So we're just going to eliminate all of that up front with the form. Secondly, the requester doesn't understand what's needed. So there's different types of file types. If you're doing a banner, that's a different file type than if you just want to print out a flyer. So some people didn't understand what the difference was, and so they were requesting one file type, and then it's really you needed a special file type, so then it's like we have to go back and redo that because it's not what they needed. So we created a FAQ page that will explain what each file type is used for, what is a flyer, what is, you know, a social media graphic, the sizes, and all of that, just to really make sure that before they're putting in the request, they understand what they need to provide and what they're really asking for. And then lastly, the Requester has no design ideas, so we created a branding and template guide that will outlet, lay out what the city's overall look should be so that we have things that look similar and it's recognizable to the public and becomes more of a consistent branding. And then we also will provide templates for people to choose from, so if you don't have an idea, you can get on there and look at some previous things that have been done, pick out elements or different designs that you like out of those, and then we can go from there. So originally, we had 34 steps in the process. We eliminated 19 steps, which was 55.9% increase in efficiency, and that helps result in time savings. And as I said before, a lot of the steps got eliminated with just that graphics request form because a lot of the steps were, "I have to go back and ask this," then they have to go back and send me the information, then maybe they don't have an idea about this, and we're going back and redoing some things. So we kind of cut out a lot of that stuff by having the form at the beginning. So that's how we were able to eliminate so many steps out of the process. So this is our, just a picture of our process map before the process and after, and then at the bottom, we have the steps that we eliminated. And then I'm just going to touch a little bit on some of the branding stuff that we did, which you guys should have seen the full branding packet. I'm just going to touch on a few pages out of there. So we came up with a color scheme. For the primary colors, we went with the green and the gold from the seal and just provided a little bit of information about where those came from because didn't really know, like, how did we come up with the green and gold? But it's actually because of the Cobb Valley and then the city's nickname, the Golden City. So we picked those two colors because we felt those are the most recognizable colors of the city. Our secondary colors, we picked gray just to have a neutral color to go along with everything. And then the blue is actually the blue that was picked for the new Topeka flag, so we're tying that into with our overall branding. So this is an example of something that we have been doing with the branding. We have our press release format with our typeface with the different department logos, and you can see on the right is just an example of what the overall press release would look And then we came up with some department logos with each of them having an icon. We're still working with some of the department heads and getting feedback on different things they might like to see or try with that, but we put them all in the same typeface. That way, everything looks kind of uniform. And then Utilities, we worked directly with Ryan over there to come up with their logo, and they actually chose one of the blues to be the flag blue as well, so we're keeping our consistency there. So also on our social media pages, we are trying to keep consistent with our branding. Our three main social media pages that we have are Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. On the upper right, that is our Facebook header that we have. On the upper right, that is our Facebook header that we have. It features some pictures from a few different city departments. And then it has the green and gold gradient. And then we do IGTV videos. That's just an example of what a cover would look like on that. And then the bottom right-hand side is a Facebook event example. So for a policy and finance meeting, this is what we would put up on Facebook to alert people of the meeting. And it has the same look as the press release header that we have. These are just some other examples of branding that we've done. On the left, up left, we have Clean Slate Day flyer. In the middle, we have the Citizen Satisfaction Survey results that was done in 2018. The bottom right here in the middle, that is a budget graphic that we pushed out on social media during the budget time. And then on the bottom left here, we have business cards, which they've just been phasing those out. As people run out, then they're phasing them in with the new design. And I just put this banner on here on the far right. It's from 2017, just to show that we've kind of been trying to go in a consistent direction, but now we're just kind of, you know, making it more official. And so in conclusion, I would say that this RPI, we improved communication between myself and people that are requesting graphics. We eliminated a lot of unnecessary delays with the form and FAQ sheets. And then we also implemented consistent branding for the city. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Senator, that's a great job. Any comments or questions from the body? Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, Mayor. Somehow, as the elected officials, we've been the stepchildren of graphics and design. I recall being told to make my own letterhead when I got elected, and many of us are using stuff that's black on white because it's a copy or something that somebody put together in an office. So if we're not on, we're not or are not on that list, I hope we could be added for our business cards as well.
Yes, that's definitely something we can do.
And including a sample. They've done some really nice little note cards that some people have done just on the machine with just a seal. If there's something else that we're branding for the city, let us know.
Yes.
This is really great work.
Thank you.
And a great process.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Yes. Great job. I just have one question. Where's Renaldo?
Renaldo is--
I don't see him anymore. I don't see him fly around.
Renaldo is actually back on the other side. He's broadcasting the meeting right now, so hiding out in the back.
Well, I'd like to say hi to Renaldo. You guys have done a great job, and I know he's been a big part of this as well. So I'm very proud of our team, our communication team. My daughter was in Wichita, and I said, let me turn on their channel. And I did, and I got a lot of fuzzy, and then it was in and out. It was terrible. And I expected more from them. And then I came home and I appreciated what you guys have done.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, City Manager.
I just want to make a comment. I think what's important to remember is that this was one of the city council's goals when we started, was to look at our branding. And it really was a spinoff of what we did with the RPI. Obviously, we made good progress with our graphics request issue, but it unearthed the real need that we had, and we're able to go through the process and come up with a branding. And I think it's important. It looks very professionally done, and it is important for our community to look that way because it is the face so much of what we do, both in sending out things in letterhead but in our social media as well. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Just a quick question. As part of your branding update, will that include uniform email signatures for all employees?
We did talk about that, but we felt that it would be up to the department if they want to do that because a couple of the departments do have, you know, a specific email thing that they use at the bottom. So we decided that we're just going to leave that up to each department if that's what they want to do.
Excellent. Can we have our own logos, the city council?
I don't believe so, but we can make one.
All the other departments get one.
Yeah, we can make the city council logo.
Fantastic, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Great job. All right. We clap for you, Lisa. Oh, yes, yes, thank you, Lisa. Chair Cohen of the team. No, we appreciate you guys. For anybody who thought the city council meetings were not exciting, think again. We now move on to the announcements. Clerk, if the clerk would read.
On the September 10th meeting, we have one proclamation. It looks like four presentations. In the action items, we have an ordinance, zoning ordinance at 2046 Southwest Van Buren. We have an ordinance for utility bills collecting for real estate lien. And then we have the personnel-related ordinance and assigned code update ordinance. The non-action items include property registration programs.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Department is going to be hosting a mental health symposium at T-Calc for first responders on September 6th. Clean Slate Day is scheduled to take place September 20th from 8:00 to 2:00 at T-Pac. And the Landlord Expo will take place September 14th. It's our second year for doing that, Landlord Expo.
Thank you, City Manager. Today, City Manager and I were able to participate in one of the meetings, again, part of our strategic plan, to speak with Topeka 501 with regards to how we could better collaborate and work. And for those of you that haven't had a chance to tour T-Calc, y'all are missing out. It is amazing, and it just fills us with pride to see the great things that Topeka Public Schools are doing. And then the part that I love the most is the community collaboration. Not only is the place, like, second to none, the spaces, the way that it looks, the feel, the class sizes are only 10 students because they're really, like, integrating into the students how to think differently, so they do it in smaller groups. They're also integrating mentors in the community. But it was great to walk in, and two of our officers were there because they're working with the kids, and that's part of one of the many programs that they have. Then they have this forensic science class, and we walked into the scene of a crime, and there's literally a body on the floor with, like, blood on their head. And the students are supposed to do research and figure out, yeah, it was, I was taken aback. I couldn't stop looking. I'm like, oh, my God. But the students are able to start analyzing all the information in that crime scene so that they could then start making the determination whether the death was natural or if it was a murder. I mean, but it's just really cool. So there's a lot of things that will come from this meeting. We will probably reconvene in all the people that went to the meetings with Dr. Anderson. That's, it was great. It's worth it. Make time to try to do that because we're trying to figure out how we continue supporting our school system in our community that I happen to be very proud of. And I'm sure that all of you are as well. Then the other thing that I want to say is a thank you to the community team that we have. Each firefighter station and the police department for each of the shifts received a love packet. If you guys know who the community team members are, they just volunteer to help doing cool things in the community, make sure that when you see them, you say thank you because I was not the only one baking cookies. And then the last thing that I was going to say is just to say a thank you to all of the individuals who are in labor unions and all of us who labor in our communities. We just celebrated Labor Day, and I think that too often, we take for granted the history of that celebration in our country. So for all of you who have worked hard, who come together to make this nation a great nation, that we are able to produce GDP, that we are able to keep our roads in order, that we're able to keep our cities going, thank you to all of you. And the last funny thing is I have increased the population of the city by two. Family members have moved in from Puerto Rico via Branson to Topeka. So let's keep increasing the numbers of our community. Councilwoman May? Councilwoman Cohen?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, they had a open house the other week at T-Calc, and I went and toured the facility. And they said they're actually allowing, they're considering allowing non-501 students, so any of the surrounding, and then also homeschool would also be included in that. I've been helping their web and digital pathway group of kids for about four years now, so since they were over at Topeka High. It's fun seeing them grow up. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Lister? Councilwoman Heller?
Well, in the spirit of talking about innovation and kind of random kudos, I just wanted to do a shout out to Howard Yule in Public Works. We've, I've never had a complaint about the announcements, about street closings and things like that before, but I think Howard has put a brand and a spin on just how he says it and how he pushes that word out, and I think it's great. So just wanted to shout out.
Deputy Mayor? Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got a report this week that one of our firefighters, they went on a call, and they, the guy was having a heart attack, and they went on a call to help him, and then AMR arrived. And one of our firefighters, he was cutting the grass, and they continued on and cut the grass with this gentleman so he wouldn't come home and have to worry about that. And, you know, that just brought joy to my heart that that's just who we are. That's the kind of guys that are out there on those trucks, running in there, and that's just who they are. So I will be contacting him and letting him know that I think that that's awesome because they didn't have to do that, but they did. And also, I am just overwhelmed at the support for the rescue mission. The other night, I was watching the news, and the DA's children raised $1,000, you know, just going out cutting grass or doing whatever they can, asking for money. I mean, these are two little kids that were knocking door to door. I have some weed, so I'll be calling them to come over and help me out. But, you know, it's just awesome how everybody is just taking a part in that. And again, that's just who Topeka is. That's who we are. And I'm glad to be Topeka proud. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Everson? Councilwoman Faglia?
I would just like to reiterate the awesomeness of T-Calc. Like I said, I really was impressed with that operation out there and the level of commitment that the instructors have. And it was rewarding for me to run into an old friend, old fire chief out there was teaching the class, and it was good to see him. They're still continuing to give to the community and leaving his experience there with the youth. But I just really think that not enough is done for us, and we've talked about this as a council, to brag about our public school system here and how well it really is doing. People sometimes take it for granted and don't give it the credit that Topeka deserves. That T-Calc is really a class operation. So my kudos to everybody who teaches the students out there. I was impressed while we were there, it was a dress-up day, and the kids were in there with their ties and everything. I mean, they conduct themselves in a professional way. I mean, it's not what a lot of people have in their mind when it comes to public schools, but it's an impressive operation. So I'm glad we have it here. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Since number five reinforced T-Calc, I'll reinforce how awesome it is for all the folks who build the infrastructure that our city relies upon, to all of those out there who get out in this weather and will fill a pothole or fix a water leak. My hat's off to you because that is really tough work. Thank you again for all you do for us.
We now move on to the public comments section. The first person signed up for public comment is Will Pope.
Hello again, counsel, Will Pope. Indefinite is a long time. The Tiff district that you're moving forward with is very unusual. Normally, Tiff districts have a sunset period on them. The one that you're moving forward with, as I understand it, is indefinite, right? Correct?
Sir, your public comments section is to speak to the council and not to ask for indirect--
Thank you for the clarification, Mayor. So the Tiff district is indefinite. That means long after you're dead, this district could still exist, taking tax money away from the metro, taking tax money away from the library, taking tax money away from the county, taking tax money from city operations, taking tax money away from the school district. You could be taking money away from schoolkids in classrooms 100 years from now because this is an indefinite tax district. I would encourage you to read as much literature as you can before making a vote in October. Read the academic studies. Tiffs have been shown they don't work, and yet you're about to vote on something that will be indefinite, that could be here 50, 100 years from now, and have a huge impact on Topeka. You call it bold, it could be reckless. You'd better be sure of the vote that you're making. So I wish you the best. I encourage you to read as much as possible before making your vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Frank Mead.
Frank. Sorry about that. My hearing stuff, everything's getting old. I'm Frank Mead, and I own a little piece of some property downtown. And on that property, we got a little sidewalk there. And I got a notice from the city saying the sidewalks is hazardous and it has to be repaired. So, okay, that's normal. We followed what we think are the rules. There's a thing called DT 118 in the engineering, and we put a fence around it because it's dangerous. And I got somebody there immediately to work on things. We tore out a set of steps because we knew if the stairs, if that was out of commission, they'd have to use these steps. We tore out the steps, poured new concrete steps immediately, and I had somebody look at it and give their opinion of what needed to be done, contractor and stuff. Now, all the contractors are extremely busy now, so getting somebody in there is extremely difficult, believe me. We have other things going on, and I have to beg to get the people to do the work. But anyway, so that's fine. And we put up the nice little fences and barriers just the way the DT 118 says, except we didn't do enough because we got from engineering a thing saying we need to put more signs, we need to put barriers. Okay, I had the people build, we got new signs made, more barriers, all that kind of stuff. And right after, immediately after that, I get a letter from the legal department in pretty, you know, it's not a letter you want to get, I'll tell you that. And as far as being nice, uh-uh. We get a letter from the legal department saying, if I don't tear down all those fences and stuff, which we'll put up according to city ordinances, they're going to come in and tear them down immediately, and that they're going to take action, and they're even going to drag me in front of you people and make a big deal of this thing. That's perfectly fine with me. We will be happy to take down the fences. It don't bother me a bit. Their maintenance, their all kinds of stuff, the barriers and stuff, I got another project they can go to. No big deal. Appreciate it. The only thing you have to keep in your mind, just keep in your mind, is that letter says it makes you responsible for any liability there. You are taking over the liability of anybody getting hurt in that area. We don't have barriers on construction. Anybody, and this doesn't apply to me. They wrote the letter, and they said, we don't want fences, we don't want barriers at construction. Okay, fine. That's perfectly good. You're going to tear them down on sidewalks, just sidewalks, on sidewalks. That's fine. Other people doing sidewalks, they don't need them either. You can't apply it to just me. Think about a little kid riding a bicycle down the sidewalk. Okay. Your liability, not mine. I appreciate it. You make my life a lot easier. We will tear down all the fences. We will take out the barriers. They are all gone tomorrow, and the high-pressure sprayer comes in tomorrow. So if you need your car washed, park it close to where we're working. We will get it. If you need, if you're hot, you need a little spray, come on by, and we'll take care of you. Appreciate it. It's your thing, your liability, not mine anymore.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Okay, at this point in time, it doesn't seem that we have any executive sessions. Making sure that, as you notice, I am now looking at legal before I do this. Yeah, not even touching the gavel. However, I will now pick up the gavel and call this meeting adjourned.